Good evening. Thank you all for coming out to this conversation about Blueprint 220. My name is Bryant Battle. I'm a school board member for a long time. I'm in my 16th year. I'm going to let a couple of the other school board members and our superintendent introduce themselves.
I'm Penny Casimir. Been a school board member a long time, too.
Sandra Bradford, another, I guess, long-timer.
Bryant Harris, superintendent.
So, thank you all. We're going to try, we had a, this is the second time, as you can see from the chart, this is our second of three kind of community conversations that the board wanted to have with the community to get some feedback on the Blueprint 220 plan. Honestly, we've got to the point where, as from a board perspective, we're kind of getting tired of talking to ourselves. You get to that point, right, with any groups, okay, we've got to open this up and get more perspectives. We had a nice discussion on Saturday. It lasted about two hours. I think, if I could set your expectation, I think this evening probably will also go about two hours. What we would like to do, just to kick off, is just to start with just a quick recap of this Blueprint 220 process and the activities that we've gone through so far. Now, as I sit here, I see a lot of familiar faces. So, raise your hand if you have been to a Blueprint 220 meeting before. Yeah, a lot of you. Thank you for doing that, and thank you for coming back this time. This will be a bit of a quick review, but we just wanted to kind of walk you through a little bit of kind of our activities, right? So, back in the winter of 2017, we, the board decided we wanted to engage on a long-term facility plan. We hired DLR, we began this process. Last spring, we had a bunch of informal community meetings. DLR did detailed assessments at all of our buildings, and we talked about the needs at each building. Blueprint 220 established a core team that was made up of some community members and some administrators. I see some in the audience tonight. And they created kind of some teaching and learning priorities that they overlaid over that facility assessment. And then, last fall, we kind of took a building-specific look, right? We looked at each building, and we kind of created, depending on the site, anywhere from a three to five-phase progression for each site, right? And then, we met with the community and got feedback on that. We changed some stuff around. The core team has done a really nice job trying to process all that community feedback. And then, this past winter, we have worked, the board and the core team have worked to try to take kind of that entire master plan and begin to start creating some priorities to it, right? And in January, we had a meeting where that big plan for each site started having some financial numbers put to it, right? And then, the board started to try to create some priorities. And we find ourselves here in the spring seeking some feedback on that. Now, a couple of important points to kind of make at the outset, right? Why are we engaging in this, right? Because we know, right, that ultimately, it's going to affect, you know, whatever we decide to do is going to be a big enough dollar worth, it can only be approved by a referendum, right? And when we looked at long-term facility plans, we know that the bonds that were issued by our community back in the late 90s through about 2001, that was all a bunch of 20-year bonds. Those 20-year bonds essentially get paid off around 2021, right? So, at that point, we, as community members, have a decision to make, right? It represents on your tax bill today, it represents, you know, on a $500,000 home, roughly $700 to $750, right? And we could just let those go, you know, go back down to zero, we get that savings, right? Or we can decide to reinvest some of it, all of it, whatever, back into the schools, right? That's the community conversation we're in the middle of right now. So, as we began this process, right, trying to come up with almost like another 20-year plan, right, we have this much stuff. When we started putting dollars to it, we realized we're going to have to create some priorities, right? And so, you know, we started looking at priorities based on the levels, right, high school, middle school, elementary, right? We also knew that we needed to have different budget levels, right, to try to structure a conversation with all of us, right? So, you know, we, the, and we'll walk through the sheets, and I guess I should have started with some housekeeping, right? Does everybody have one of the big sheets with all the colored columns on them, right? We'll talk about that in a little bit. And then, everybody should have also picked up an envelope of goodies. Does everybody have an envelope? We'll get to those in a second, too. So, you know, we tried to create these kind of budgeted levels to look at. Now, I will tell you what the board did, right, if you've been following board meetings. We took, we tried to take the big master plan, and we tried to create it into, broke it down into more granular line items, right, and that's kind of what you see on this sheet. A quick comment about the numbers, right? The numbers, one, if you were like the Board of Education, you had a bit of sticker shock, right, when you looked at the numbers, right? When we looked at everything we wanted to do, right, it was probably well over $500 million, right? So, there's a sticker shock element to these numbers that we all have, right? And you'd have, and what I'll tell you is we, DLR, as architects, I think, did a good job from an architectural perspective. We brought in Pepper Construction, which we have had a fantastic relationship with in building projects within the district to estimate the numbers associated with it. And I see Lance over there. Raise your hand. We're going to start talking about numbers. Lance is the guy who came up with...
I'm saying Lance is the guy.
Yeah, we're talking sticker shock. He wants to leave. And dear, we have a representative from our architecture firm, DLR, Kristen's right here on the front row.
Lance is from Pepper.
And Lance is from Pepper, right? So, Lance, you know, has explained to us in the past, and again in this process, right, that when you build schools, it's not like building a home. It's not like even building a commercial building, a business building, an office space, right? You build schools with materials that are designed to last not for 20, 30 years, but you hope they're going to last 50, 75 years or longer, as well as withstand the rigors of a school. So, like, if you look around here, like, in most schools, you don't see a lot of drywall, right? You see a lot of, you know, brick and mortar, right, and they're built to last longer. So, as a general rule, you're looking at numbers that are probably kind of oscillating around $400 hours a square foot to do significant work in schools. Elementary schools are lower. High schools are a little higher. Middle schools, obviously, is just kind of in the middle. And that also has to do with the amount of square feet, right, that you want at each one of those levels, too, and the amount of specialized resources you have. But understand, the board had sticker shock, too. One of the things we did try to do with these numbers, is Lance being the good estimator that he is, gave us a range, right? For the sake of planning, the numbers you're looking at on this sheet are kind of the midpoint of those ranges, right? And as we've gone through the process, the other thing that has come out, and based on DLR and Lance, they said some things need to kind of move together, right? So, when you look on your big sheet, and you'll see there's little boxes around elements, right? Those are things that, from a construction perspective, really need to move together, right? So, if you were going to kind of switch stuff around, for instance, if you look in the 150 column, you know, the front entry and the atrium addition and the student services renovation, those two, because they're adjacent, if you were going to move those around, you probably want to move those around together. So, that was kind of the process that the board has used for this, and we're really anxious to get your feedback tonight. So, I'm going to tell you a little bit about how we're going to try to do this, right? So, in a minute, I'm going to walk through this and explain a little bit of the logic that is applied in this sheet. In your, in your envelope, and I'm going to open one, too, so you should have, yeah, okay, good. So, you'll have some stickies, right? You'll have, you'll have some of these, right, and you're also going to have some dots, some red, green, and yellow dots, right? That'll be our last exercise tonight, right, where we're going to do a little bit of selection. Right now, I want to draw your attention to your sticky notes, right, because as we begin the discussion here in a sec, we're going to take a break, I don't know, whenever it seems to make sense in the conversation, and we're going to ask you guys to write down any comments, suggested changes, whatever. So, as you are thinking about during the conversation, a change you want to make, or if you want to reinforce a particular idea, and you want to be able to put it up on those boards, you can write those comments on here, and then we'll take a break for everybody to post them on there, all right? So, that'll be the first exercise. The second exercise, we'll use the dots, and we'll explain those when we get there. With that, let's go into the chart, right? So, I'm just going to walk you through this real quick. What's here, and then we'll open it up to some clarifying questions, right? So, in the first column, it's labeled 80 million, and you'll see the annual tax impact for a $500,000 home is located up in the title of each one, of each column. And the, so, for instance, in the first column, right, if you did, if we did nothing, right, don't do any of this, right? Remember, a $500,000 house will save, you know, $700, $750, right? If you did an 80-million-dollar column, then the $500,000 home would save about $314 off of our current tax bill. Now, in this first column, we have what we call Level 1, and I realize as we're looking at this, that for some people, that makes sense, but for others, we probably need to clarify it, right? So, when DLR went through and did their assessment of every building, they created a task list of what was needed for every building, not just now, but for like the next 20 years. And it's really around the envelope and the infrastructure of the building, right? It's your HVAC units, it's any plumbing issues, it could be short-term repairs. And so, that is what's included in Level 1 for each one of these levels, right? And as you can see, obviously, there's a lot we have, because we have more elementary buildings, right? At the elementary, you've got a lot more investment in buildings than you do at the middle and high schools, right? Now, the other thing that's included in this first column is safety and security upgrades, right? Now, we've had people ask, okay, what exactly does that mean? So, we're not going to go into all the details of what our proposed security procedures are. Hopefully, you can understand why it makes sense not to share that publicly. But what we have shared publicly is that a lot of the improvements in all of our buildings are kind of based on a security protocol that has certainly gained a lot of traction within buildings to try to compartmentalize the building, right? So, to be able, if there ever is an incident in a building, that you can segment the building off to contain whatever the issue is, right? So, there are many tools that you can use, and the board has spent a lot of time with both DLR and Pepper looking at some. And I will tell you, we've had a lot of people that have said, oh, you know, this school was just built in Kansas, and it has state-of-the-art stuff, and, you know, they show you all the stuff they have. We haven't seen anything, so far at least, in the stuff that's been shared with us, that we haven't reviewed ourselves, right? So, understand, the principle is to be able to put improvements into the buildings that will help us contain any incident that happens. And so, you'll see, it's a, some people, I mean, it's a pretty significant investment, right, but the board has prioritized the Level 1 and the safety and security as being kind of that first level that we would want to kind of think that we have to get done, right? I mean, it's kind of protecting your existing investment in these buildings. We have almost 1.5 million square feet that this community has dedicated to education. Certainly, we need to keep maintaining it. And we certainly know that the safety and security environment in schools has changed significantly, and we think these upgrades will provide that assurance in each of our buildings. At the next column over, you'll see a couple of things. There was a lot of talk in a lot of Blueprint 220 meetings in the past about trying to get to more flexible learning environments and how to support teachers as they look to deliver education in a very different way than what we have done in the past. So, you'll see that there's a, an allocation, a pretty significant allocation of furniture, fixtures, and equipment at all three levels in this next grouping. In addition, there's a priority on some additions and renovations at the high school, as well as some site work at the high school. As the board debated, you know, and we went all over the map, right, we were looking at different options, but we, what we did, I will tell you, the tool that we used is we took all these line items that you see here, right? We had a spreadsheet, right, we had the budgeted levels, and we had all the board members individually fill it out. What would you put where, right? And then, we just kind of created kind of a weighted average, right, of all seven board members. And that's essentially how we started this, and then, through conversations, we've kind of moved it around a little bit. But the basic philosophy in prioritization starts kind of high school first, middle school second, elementary, then elementary. And I think a lot of the board discussion at high school started with, you know, every kid in the district goes through that building, right? But that's one of the things we want to hear feedback on tonight. So, high school priority in that 150 bucket. Then, when you go to the 250 bucket, you kind of finish off a lot of what was in the master plan at the high school. You do some more additions and renovations. You do a little bit more site work. For those that were, in previous meetings, there was an academic atrium that cost us about $80 million that did not make this list. One of the things you'll find is big financial boulders became hard to prioritize, right? So, the atrium at the high school is one of them. Also, in this 200 level, you'll see a priority on the middle schools, and really, that first priority after some of the flexible learning stuff was to get rid of the mobiles and add enough classrooms at the middle school so we can eliminate the mobiles. And then, there's some site work that goes with that. Also, in that 200 bucket, we added what we thought were high safety priorities at four of our elementary buildings that typically involve traffic, parking and traffic, right? So, you know, countryside, you know, we talked about a second entrance, you know, on Brinker. Grove and expanded parking lot lines, more parking, and a new entrance that would kind of wrap around to the east of the line station campus and dump out onto Lake Cook, right? And then, at North Barrington, we would add a entry-exit off of Miller. We think that's, from a traffic safety perspective, those are high priorities. Our facilities committee, of which Penny is a member of, would be the first one to remind us, though, that those entrances still have to go through the right approval processes with the villages and IDOT and the counties and all that. So, we haven't done any of that stuff yet, but this is just the plan. And then, when you get to the 250, you'll see we start enhancing the middle schools with some fine arts additions. You start getting into significant renovations to the kitchen and cafeterias, and some additional site work. And then, in the elementary levels, we're able to start adding on to additional classrooms into elementary, including four additional classrooms at Grove, some sensory and therapy rooms at all the elementary buildings, and some new kindergarten classrooms, which will free up enough space at the elementary level to make it comfortable that even with a modest bump up in elementary enrollment at some point in the next 20 years, hopefully, we can maintain full-day kindergarten as a district program. And then, the last column contemplates a third middle school. Now, obviously, if we built a third middle school, there are some things in the other columns that would not be required, right? So, you wouldn't need to add additional space onto Prairie and Station. But what we would do if we build a third middle school is make significant renovations to Prairie and Station to make it more equitable, so we had three equitable middle schools. And if we did that, you'll see the incremental cost from the economics up to 250 would be about another $74 million, all right? Not everything that was in our master plan made it on here, right? I mean, this got to be the hard part for the board. Couldn't do everything we wanted to do with the budget we had. There's a lot of work at both the middle school and the elementary level, right, that didn't make it on here. But again, I will tell you, the board was starting to get really uncomfortable, starting to get too high here without having a conversation with the community, right, about comfort level with this level of spending, right, which is why we're here tonight. So, first question is, I don't want to get into questions about priorities, why did you do this? We'll get to that in a sec, but just clarifying questions about what's here. Yep?
When you're making this, you had to put a category, like, example, on the elementary level, if there's parking and traffic related in one block, are you making a singular decision for all elementary schools, or could you shift priorities between, you know, parking lot is more important at this elementary, sensory rooms are more important, split them up, or are they blocks? How should that get said?
I think in the process that the, excuse me, the board did, there was an implied...
Can you repeat the question? I don't think everybody...
Oh. I think the question, I'll try to repeat it, is, you know, could you differentiate in your decision-making, like, parking at one school, entry at another school, going around the sensor room? I mean, the answer is yes. Ultimately, we can. For this exercise, we tried to stick with a sense of equity at the levels. So, whatever we would do at station, we would do at Prairie, and whatever we would do for elementary, you know, in terms of sensory rooms, we would try to do it at all of them, right? That was, for this part of the exercise, that's kind of how you see this falling out. I think, so, for instance, on these four we talked about, I think the board would probably want to think of those as a block of four. We wouldn't want to address the parking issue or the entrance issue at lines, but not do it at countryside, for instance.
It would be our, it would be our hope to be able to do that. The facilities, we would be coming out again. You know, I may say, no, can't do that one, or, you know, one of them may be acceptable from other governing bodies, you know, so we may be able to do all four. We may not be able to do any.
Other clarifying questions? Yep? Oh, and by the way, I'm sorry, I should have said this before. I'm going to go back. Could you just kind of introduce yourself to your friends and neighbors, just your name?
Okay. I'm Kimberly Saunders. I'm a mom of three. I'm from North Barrington.
I'm Marnie Dido, and my daughter is next door. How does the timeline look like?
That's a great question. So, if, you know, I don't know, one of the questions we still have to decide is the timeline. If we want to do any of this, we have to do it through a referendum. We would have to decide on a timeline for a referendum.
Do we have to run the referendum vote?
We have, there's none scheduled right now, so we would have to get, we haven't gotten to that point yet, right, but we would have to. I mean, theoretically, you could put a vote on the ballot in the fall. If you didn't do it in the fall, the next opportunity would be the spring of '19. The next opportunity after that is the spring of '20. If the referendum did pass, right, then you issue bonds to support whatever work you chose. And, you know, look, realistically, you're not going to get all this done in one year, right? This is a lot of work. I mean, and we would probably ask Lance to build it all. So, I mean, depending, obviously, on the scope, right, where we would end up on this continuum, I think it could easily be two to three to four to five years.
Yeah, yeah.
You afford all that done?
Yeah, definitely, three or four to three. Just with the amount of facing that has to be done to still take over.
Because we're supposed to be holding school in these buildings.
Excellent question. Other clarifying questions?
I'm Penny Ketchum. I'm at the Grove. My question is about the tax impact. You talk about the annual. I understand it's going to be annual, but how many years is that?
So, again, this is based on a 20-year bond, right? So, typically, you know, and you can pick any duration you want. You could do a five-year bond, 10, 15, you can pick that what you want. But historically, in the past, we've issued 20-year bonds for these major capital things. So, this tax impact is based on a 20-year bond. It's another excellent question. So, yep?
I'm Michelle Grace. I'm at South Barrington. So, I know everything is projections, and everything is, we think, maybe possibly in the market, it's about a midpoint range for each of those items. So, I assume, and this is close to my heart, that when you get down to the road, whatever work is most important to the market, you would say you're a $150 million bond on the referendum, on the ballot for referendum. When you get half that to midpoint, right, so when you start getting projections back, when you look at everything that is in there, if it comes back at $130 million, how do you turn what comes in there, or realistically, if it comes back at $180 million, how do you then say, okay, these are the things that the community felt was important, and now we can't do that because the double figure within the bond structure?
Right. So, the first one is the easier one to deal with, right? So, and that, at that point, I mean, that's a conversation that the board and the community would have to have, you know, we think we're under budget. We can do a little bit more than what we thought. What's kind of the next priority?
Or we can abate.
Or we can abate in that spending, right?
Can you also explain, because you brought up the mid-range, can you explain what you need to have priced for school?
I can. I thought we did before, but the, so, the range that Lance gave us, right, there was a high and low. The numbers that you see here on this chart are the ones that are right in the middle of that range, right, from a planning perspective. So, to Michelle's point, it could come in higher or lower, right? If the bids come in higher, then you have to trim something. You don't have enough money to do the stuff you thought you could do, right? And that's just always inherent in these processes. I, you know, Penny will tell you, for the last few years, we've had estimates on our summer projects, and the bids have come in lower, so we've been able to do more than we wanted to, right? But for the first time this year, because I think, I think activity's starting to percolate out there a little bit, bids now are coming in higher than our estimates, right? So, that means you can't do as much as you thought. And for people that have been around, was anybody around in the late 90s voting on the swimming pool at the high school? I think we approved it three times, right, for exactly that reason, right? It was in the plan to put a swimming pool at the high school, but when the bids came in, they came in much higher. So, they had to trim something, and the swimming pool got bumped a couple of times. So, that's just, that is part of the uncertainty of this game.
So, in that case, then, they're maybe potentially further wrong if that happens? Is that, that would be...
That would be another, that would be a community decision to make. Other clarifying questions? These are great questions.
My name is Bill Hartman, and I live at 1200 South Barrington Road, so just on the other side of Barrington Road. I've never had any kids, so I'm not involved in the schools, although I still pay.
We all thank you for that.
I was wondering, if you go to referendum, are you going to pick one of these options, or do you give the voters one to pick, or how do you...
Well, the process of trying to decide that builds what we're in the middle of right now, right? So, but when we do pick, I mean, if we do go to referendum, whatever level we end up picking, and it doesn't have to be one of these, it could be, could be 175, I'm making it, right? But whatever, when we do decide that, you know, I think the board, the way we've been talking about it, our expectation is, is we would be clear with the community that whatever that bond issue is, it would be used for these things, right? And we would list the things that are there.
And if you're going to pre-decide which option to present to the voters?
When we get to the referendum point, yes.
And so, that's why we're here in the conversation now, to determine what should be included, how to prioritize.
Other clarifying questions? Don't tell the group on Saturday that you guys are asking better questions. Anything else? Okay, now, let me ask you guys a question. How do you react to this sheet and the implied priorities that are in it?
There's no wrong answer.
Hi, I'm Mary Niall. I have two kids, I'm a little 31 and 11. Can you comment on your process of how you decided what got in the green bucket and what got in the blue? For example, I look at the blue, and I see stuff that is really affecting learning.
Yes.
And I see a whole lot of sports, and I love sports, it's wonderful, in the green. Like how, is it just because those are cheaper and you're trying to port to that? But how come the library is not in the green? And like the fitness, I'm just wondering how you made your choices.
Great question. I mean, I don't want to hog them. So, the answer, right, is when the board, when we did our exercise, right, to try to prioritize everything. The library, for instance, and I will tell you, the difference between being in this column and this column, for kind of what you're talking about, was a very small difference, right? It might have been one board member who didn't value that and couldn't maybe put it up here, right? So it wasn't a really big difference.
We all valued it. Wait a minute.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I took a quiet.
No, just prioritize.
Yeah, just, by the way, and I'll say it, and I think what Sandra, look, and I probably didn't say this strong enough, but everything that's in the master plan, right, that we've been looking at, we think that there is big value, right? There's nothing that we wouldn't want to do. But the point is, we don't have an unlimited budget. So when you have a budget to constrain it, it makes some tough decisions. So ultimately, right, I think you can make a really strong argument for things that are in the blue to go into the green, right? And the argument, and this is when I said we got kind of tired of talking to ourselves, right? Because the question is, like, move something over, what are you going to move back? Right? And I will tell you, when you go through the process, what gets really hard are the big numbers, right? So, for instance, I mean, you know, the future-ready classroom renovation at the high school, boy, that seems like, you know, I mean, that's making a really significant impact on how we deliver at the high school, right? But it's $10 million, right? If I move $10 million over there, what am I going to take away? I could take away the PE and wellness, I could take away a lot of the sports stuff. And I'm not so sure that I can tell you that there's a scientific reason why one ended up on the other, other than just that survey of the board members. But that's why we're here tonight, right? So that's the kind of thing where you say, boy, you know, I don't like all of the sports stuff in the green column, I'd rather see the library or something else go over there. That's the kind of thing that we want to hear tonight, and we hope you put on a sticker and when we, and then you can put it on as one of your...
They started explaining, and I love sports. It's true. But if you only have excellent money, then we want to do the best school, or whatever our goal is, I mean, to know what our, achieve excellence for all learners. So what does that mean in terms of a value?
It does, and I will tell you what gets really hard is, is, you know, I will tell you, our friends in the fine arts boosters, you know, have been telling us for years how far behind we are in fine arts stuff, right? And they're absolutely correct, right? Our youth athletic groups, right, and our high school booster groups have also been talking about, you know, how we need to improve facilities. I mean, if anybody, for instance, has been able to feel the dreams lately, you know, built in, what, 1991, 92, it's a tired facility, right, outside of our stadium. So they all have valid things. And I will tell you, from a board perspective, one of the things that we were trying to do is balance, just like when we try to balance the social emotional health of kids, right? It's not just the classroom, right? We know connections with fine arts, connections with athletics, clubs, all those things are important, right? And typically, our students that are involved in those have higher GPAs, all that stuff, right? So we're trying to look at the whole student and everything, and when we're looking at the facilities.
I would also just add that if I may, that I think that's, for those very reasons that you raised, that's why you see the furniture fixtures and equipment at each level. So that there is impact to the classroom at every single level. That's why you see those there. And I would say that that was probably, you know, the board was not all there when we first started our conversations. And, but after we revoked it or had our discussions, we did end up with furniture fixtures and equipment all in the green, for that very reason. So that every classroom is impacted.
I think to build on what Sandra's saying too about the furniture, this isn't just replacing this chair with another chair. This is all new furniture in the classrooms that will change the delivery of education. And we heard from our teachers that we really wanted some flexibility, and that the current, you know, desks in a row, they're not working. And, you know, DLR came and observed kids, and they had some second graders, they weren't in their desks until 2:00 in the afternoon. So the furniture is to address, to what Sandra's point, you know, it was an attempt at making an impact at all levels.
Other questions on the sheet, priorities?
I have one.
Yep?
My name's Jose, I have two children that are sending in. As a parent, I know every parent would agree that safety and security is our number one target for our children. And fixtures and equipment, furniture is in that column, she and security and safety and housing.
Well, if you look at the very first column, it was such a high priority for us that we put it before the furniture. See the safety and security upgrades in the first column? There, we front-loaded that because it was so important.
All right, well, you made your words go for 150, Shannon Allison.
Oh, it is still there, they build.
Here's the thing, so what's in the green column, the 150 column includes what's in the 80, 80 rule column. They build upon each other.
Great question. We didn't clarify that. So every, yeah, every column includes any column to the left that I'm referring to. Other questions? Yep?
Can you talk a little bit about the thinking on the middle school level of extending and renovating versus building a third? My understanding is some of the overcrowding issues aren't just we have to use local classrooms, but all the pressure is on all of the general economy areas. And so renovate in the $200 million column, and you're fixing the classroom for issues, how are you addressing the other overcrowding issues? How did you lay out, you know, sort of what goes in 250 to address those issues? And even where they are, sort of how you, how does that, though, issue get addressed to the middle schools?
Yeah, do you want to take first round?
So I'll go in. It's a good question, because the common areas are not changing. But we felt that there would, I think we felt we needed to address it both ways, for people who felt that a third middle school was unnecessary versus we just need additional classrooms and we can survive with what we have. Now, we've talked about some cafeteria renovations, kitchen renovations, that should help kids get through the cafeteria more quickly, because right now, that's, that can be a bit of an issue. But to your point, it will not change PE space, it will not change library space.
I mean, I, okay, personally, right, I mean, we all have, and my guess is many of you probably have something that you really like as part of, if you've been a part of the Blue 220, there was an idea, something you really liked, and you might not see it here. I got several that I was really disappointed in where it ended up, right? And I think the third middle school is one of them. To me, I don't know how we don't have, we don't build a third middle school. That's, I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you my challenge and kind of the answer, right? To build the third middle school is 100, I mean, between building a third one and then making station and prairie equitable, it's $110 million, right? And when you think about trying to balance what you need to do at the high school and elementary and at these budget levels, the first 80 already taken with, you know, basic maintenance and safety and security, $110 million kind of just dominates the sheet, right? And essentially, what you're doing is you're saying, I'm going to prioritize middle school over everything else, right? And that got to be hard, right? Especially when you think about saying, what I need to do at the high school, some stuff at elementary, and then that's where I think you saw kind of, in a minimum, we've got to get rid of those levels, right? So that kind of gets prioritized first, right, in middle schools. But I just think it's that big dollar that makes it really hard. Now, here's where I type, you know, when we go through later, and we're trying to figure out where people put their value proposition, right? If people really think, right, that as a community, we want to look at a tax impact out here, the board can certainly bill numbers, right? I will tell you, the board is a little concerned, even going kind of out here, how the community was going to react to the bill, right? And that's one of the reasons we'll, we'll have that conversation after, you know, kind of our last exercise. But that's what the board's feeling.
We had many discussions about it.
Ryan?
Yep?
Do you have any reliable expectations of what an enrollment is going to be? Is it expected to go up or down?
Yeah, you know, so, I mean, reliable is the one that makes me say I'm not sure, right? Do we have projections yet, right? So we rely on a demographer, right? And the last study we did a couple of years ago, right before we started this process, essentially says that our enrollment is going to stay pretty flat, right? Now, our elementary enrollment, right, is softer than it was 10 years ago, right? And that's why it's freed up room for programs like full-day kindergarten, you know, buildings, right? And so our elementary, our middle, our high school are really, you know, I would say flat would be how I'd characterize the projections, right? But those projections can change, right? I mean, look, there's more rooftops in Barrington 220 than there's ever been, right? If all of a sudden economic factors and behavior factors caused a bunch of young families to move into 220, those numbers could go up pretty significantly, right? If millennials say, we're not going to move this far out of Barrington, maybe they stay soft, flat or go down, right? It's a hard thing to predict, though. But right now, our demographer's projecting flat.
Isn't there a big project, do they expect it to bounce out of Barrington?
Yeah, right? Just that one project could give us hundreds of kids, right? And then there's one down in, there's the one in Plum Farms, you know, that, you know, we've been involved in a kind of a legal tussle with them. And there's another one that they're trying to do, an interesting concept on the old AT&amp;T property that's in 220, right? And that could yield another 125 kids growth. So, yeah, those are the things, you just don't know.
And there are other undeveloped pieces of land in the district. You know, and we start to see growth in certain pockets. So Grove, for example, next year will have a six mobile classrooms outside in order to meet enrollment. Hough experience, is experiencing some growth. So it doesn't get sprinkled all over evenly, unfortunately, they come up in pockets, or...
Yeah. Doris' mobile classroom here at Grove, is it one building with six classrooms?
Yes.
Yep. By the way, I'm sorry, Mr. N.
Doris' room and seven two kids at Grove.
Thanks, Doris.
I'm Allison Scott, I have two kids here at Grove. I have a question about the 800 seat fine arts center under the 150 million home.
Yep, yep.
Versus the auditorium renovation under the 200 million home.
Great question, great question.
So are you adding a new one?
Yes.
Are you adding a new fine arts center? Is that the 13 million?
Yeah, so if you were to...
And what would you do with the existing auditorium?
We would renovate it into a couple of smaller...
Under the 150, or you'd leave it alone?
Uh, no, you'd leave it alone.
So what would it be used for?
Uh, I don't know.
So then if you, and then, because if you did the...
So, so here, I mean, I'll go back up just a sec, just so everyone can understand. So, because it's a great question, right? There's a fine arts renovation. This actually, if you were to go to the site plan for the high school, right, right kind of in front of the existing auditorium, would be a new fine arts center, right? So, and in that fine arts center, you know, you've got your performing, as well as some instructional space, right? And then the concept would be to take our old auditorium and renovate that space for additional fine arts instruction space and a couple of smaller performance areas, kind of like the black boxes, right? One of the things, when we did kind of a comp to other high schools in the area, right, is we're like, you know, we've got like two theaters, right? We have the main theater, we have the black box, right? We're the only ones that have two. Everyone else has many more, right? Because, and these areas focus not just on fine arts, but they're actually used for a lot of other large group instruction areas, right? So for instance, I think we did this, like, on our existing auditorium, I think somebody said there was like 1,100 scheduled events throughout the year. Oh, Bridgette, yeah, she's the one who did. Do you remember what the number was?
Yeah, it was around 1,100, different uses within a year, and when we ran the data, we also found that less than half of those were fine arts events, so concerts and things like that. The elementaries, the middle schools, the student council, athletic award nights, community, guest speakers. It's, I think the difficulty right now is the current auditorium isn't just the fine arts space for a pretty robust fine arts program, it's also the only large speaking space, I'd say, within town.
How many seats the current auditorium holds? 704, 704, and you're only going up to 100 and a new one?
But I think the idea is, we really need, if we're going, if we were going to make a significant investment in the high school for fine arts slash large group construction space, right, you need to have more distinct spaces rather than one space with the sloped, you know, floor and fixed things. So that's what we have seen other high schools in Northwest suburbs go to. We think it's a much better fit for us. And this goes back, I think, to the first question that was asked. I mean, you could link those two together, right? I mean, I think that's a fairly reasonable thing. Again, the line separating the 150 and the 200 column is really, really small, right? But again, if that's one of those comments you want to leave, right? Absolutely. And I think, you know, when we begin to finalize this and kind of see how we're doing, I mean, these are some of the questions we're going to have to grab.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but if you have a 700 seat auditorium that you fill at certain basic capacity, right, and you're only going up 96 seats for those events, is that going to, could you, could you go more seats, or could, what is the price? You know, I'm just saying, if you're seeing this much usage and we're having more children come into the district, more usage of the facility?
Our architect wants to weigh in.
Yeah. So part of what would be included in that fine arts center would be, at least this is on the table, would be a full-size performance stage with backing up to a full-size practice stage, so that students, multiple groups, so say, you're putting on a spring musical, but somebody else might need the odd, like, the main stage, that musical could be practicing in the practice stage, the full-size practice stage. And then it's also just for practices in general, you can practice full-on with the sets and everything, and then be ready for the performance, but also with the seat number. So that takes up a fair amount of square footage. It also adds, maybe adding like a larger scene shop that connects to both the practice stage and the performance stage. Again, these are all really speculative ideas, but the square footage per seat today is a couple square feet bigger than what it used to be when you would build an auditorium. So today, you need to have 11 square feet per person, and that determines how many seats can go into that auditorium. So right now, I can't remember, I did the calculation a while ago, but the number of seats in your auditorium now is way under the 11 square feet per person, so.
Right, so the, just to weigh up quick, the current auditorium's seats are, were built in 1948. It's been recovered since then, but none of the springs or anything like that has been done. So I know the architects were, you know, a good question came up earlier, how, you know, could we just redo the seats with our current space? And I think it would bring, the architects, it would bring it down to like a low 500 or the high 400.
I thought it started with four.
I think the 800 number two, you know, when we, again, this is just, you know, thinking, was, we have a...
was, we have a practically 750 students per class at the high school level right now. And I know a high school principal weighed in on, he said, "I'd like to at least have a senior, if I have a senior class meeting, I can't even do it in our current, nowhere in that building can you do that except the gym, full-mon gym, which isn't always conducive for those types of things." So he said, "I'd just like to be able to..." So I think that's where that number kind of came from initially, but it's a soft number. I mean, we certainly could work with that. I, you know, we don't have, you know, endless space on that campus either. I mean, as you all know, it's tight there. So when you're adding, you know, floor space to an already very large campus, that's another consideration. How much can you get on that site without, you know, compromising traffic flow? And those of you that are around that campus, you know exactly what I'm talking about. So we have to be very conscious of all those factors that goes on that.
And the last thing I'll add, where this question is really important in the overall process, is both our friends at DLR and our friends at Pepper will tell you, you know, this is kind of, you know, order of magnitude costs and scope based on size. Once we start narrowing the scope of the stuff we're looking at, right, we'll start getting into a little bit more detail like that. You know, what happens if we do go to 1,000, right? Is that, do we have the space? What would the cost impact be? And so right now, we're just trying to start focusing on this next narrow group, and then we'll, we'll start digging in a little deeper on each one.
Thanks.
I guess I did want to throw in just about the auditorium, the fine arts. We had a, I was on the core team, we had a high school math teacher on the core team as well. And we toured a number of auditoriums, and he said, "Oh, gosh, what I would give to be able to have all of my algebra students here at one time, to be able to speak to all of them and have multiple teachers." So not just for fine arts performance, all subject areas could utilize this space. And he said, "We just don't have a place to do that in our district." And he said, "There's a lot of good practice that says you should."
So, question over here.
I know you're a nanny, and I've heard this grandpa in high school districts, so I'm much different than my parents in many ways, but I, as you've obviously put a tremendous amount of work and effort and thought into all this, so I applaud you for, you know, engaging the community and spending a lot of time with coming up with this. As, I don't need to tell you and I'm sure many in the room, there hasn't been a big appetite in the past for referendum passing. And as you mentioned, Brian, there's, you know, the potential for up to two and a half years from now, having a referendum even on the ballot, if, you know, let's say it goes unfalling, it doesn't pass, doesn't pass. So two and a half years, all these estimates go off. And my question for you, I guess, is, what is the strategy for the plan for presenting the referendum? So for example, one part of that question is, if you present the 200 million referendum and it doesn't pass, is the strategy go down to 150 and continue to go down and dial back? Meanwhile, time is passing, and what happens to these estimates? So...
Do, I'll ask, one's an easy one, the first one about the estimates, right? When Lance made these estimates, he did build in an inflation factor, right, for the timing, understanding that we're probably not going to build most of these till three or four years up, kind of as a midpoint. So he's, that's already built into these numbers. So he did that escalation, and then he put a range on it. So the mid-range you see here includes an escalation for a few years, right? And look, escalation is important. I mean, Penny and I, on Saturday morning, were talking a little bit about this. When we last did the big building referendums 20 years ago, you know, if you look at construction indices, right, I mean, it's, our buying power today versus 20 years ago is about 50% of what it was 20 years ago. It doesn't go as far, right? So you're right, construction costs are impacted a lot by time. Regarding referendum strategy, you're asking a question we haven't even begun to think about. We're still trying to figure out if there's an appetite for the first one. So I don't know how to answer that at this point.
May I go back and embellish on that previous question? So the comment was made about, I think you asked the question about all the site work and things like that that are on here. And then we talked about when we built the auditorium and I would even consider it a little bit of a safety concern, how we get through the high school today, right? So a lot of the reason you see a lot of the site work here too, it's not just because it's a baseball field or whatever, it's because we're really expanding the footprint. If you look at the pictures that are on the website, it really expands the footprint of the high school to take advantage of the land that we've acquired over the last several years on the other side of our road. So that's a reason, I think, a lot of that is here too, is so we can take advantage and expand the footprint of our school.
And improve the traffic flow.
Yes, and thus improve the safety of the traffic flow.
Eliminate the circle around the building.
Yeah.
Bottom line.
We would hope.
We're going to the front row.
Thank you. I'm Kim Elizabeth, and I just moved into the neighborhood.
Welcome.
Three small children, so we increase in here enrollment.
Thank you.
Can you help me understand how some of these amenities rates have a negative impact on taxes? How can we build and still pay less?
Ah, that's because, so, so our tax bill, the tax bill you get from the schools, right? There's a lot of other things in the tax bill. But the one you get from the school is really comprised of two calculations, right? One is our operating rate, our operating budget, right? And then the other is just pay back the bonds that we issued to build the buildings, right? So those are two separate ones, right? And the, so the bonds, as we've issued bonds over 20 years, we've kind of kept them relatively flat the way we structured them, so that there's some predictability to our tax bills. Those are due to come off, right? So if you assume that they come off, right, that's where we say we can save on a $500,000 home, you know, $725, which, right? So, so this says, if I only reinvest 80 of that, right, then the net effect would be $300 less than what I'm paying. Does that make sense? Good point. Yep.
My name is Mike P. I have two children, they're in CI program, while they're close, they're on the countryside. And I want to ask, I'm trying to visualize with the 21st century, like, future-ready classroom innovation. So I'm trying to, I saw the videos, and I've had some of the other presentations. So how, it's really cool, and there's a lot of things, but how will that affect, like, the class size? Because I know, like, with some of these new chairs and desks and tabletops, will you look at the class size, the size cap, like, I don't know, if you have the number number, like, 26 students per, will that, I mean, would it just, would the space change? The footprint, or would it just be, like, you have the same classroom, but the furniture won't change? Because I'm just seeing, if you have, let's say, you have 26 students, and they're not sitting in regular old school desks, will, will that be a problem with the new furniture?
So, so never in our conversation have we broached the subject, nor I don't think that there's an interest in broaching the subject of increasing class sizes. As a consequence, or a, you know, as a result of adding different furniture or changing class, you know?
I was just saying, like, an undependent count, like, you know, like...
That's not, that is not our intention.
Right, right, I understand that, but I was just thinking, like, to me, like, the architect, or when you go to these different schools every day, I thought about that, you know, like, if we can buy the furniture, just...
Are you concerned that perhaps the new furniture might not fit as well?
Yeah, like, this physical space, I'm thinking, that's, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think the new furniture, that, at least the kinds that I've seen in action actually take up less space, because they're able to kind of fit together in a way that's not quite so clunky, you know, looking at chairs with wheels that have the desks attached to them, easy, easy to move. But I think that a lot of the furniture, because it's designed to kind of fit together and to be reconfigured in the space, it allows for potentially more space, if not, you know, not really changing the space, but because you can move it out of the way, you could then have more space for group activities or however you want to use the classroom.
No, it's a good question. Create flexibility, that was the goal.
Yep, good.
Question, is the...
I'm sorry, your name?
Ted Romans, I have two kids at Grove. Is the focus of the district really to prepare the kids for four-year college, or how much preparation is done for kids who probably know they're not going to go to college, like, you know, like, when I was in school, like, the auto shop, mechanics classes, that kind of thing? And, because I don't see much in here related to that. Or do the kids go to some, go to another school, or another location to get that issue?
It's a great question. So a couple things. One, I, I think most of us on the board would say that we're pleased with kind of a lot of the community dialogue that's happened, not just in our community, but in broader sense, to try to value the trades, and to try to tell kids, it's okay, right, to not go to a four-year school, right? There's a lot of reasons. As a matter of fact, right, almost one-third of our kids last year went to Harper, right? And, and we have, and I'll ask Dr. Harris to comment on our partnership with Harper in a second, but we've done this in a way, in a really good way with Harper, where not only are we trying to get kids some college credits, right, that they can use towards a two-year degree, right? But they even have the ability, if they do certain things right during their four years of high school, to get that two-year degree free of charge from Harper. Now, when it comes to vocational, a lot of, you know, we've got some, like, we're teaching kids how to code, right? Now, that's more of electronic. A lot of those kids go out, go out and get a job right out of high school, right? A lot of them do, right? When it comes to things like automotive tech and things like that, there are facilities required, right, which we don't have, but we do have reciprocal agreements where we're able to send them to some other schools. First of all, Dr. Harris, comment.
Yeah, it's a dear going here.
Yes, yes.
You know, it's a great question, and I, we have these conversations with high school staff in particular, with some of that. I, let me answer your question broadly, and then I'll get specific at that level. What we've always said is to allow kids to have, be able to attend a college and/or career of their choice, right? That's our target. And they need a certain skill set. They have to be able to read, write, and compute at a high level, no matter where you're headed. So, so therefore, we have a lot of kids that don't go to four-year schools, as Brian mentioned. And we have a lot of kids, of our graduating class last year, 750 students, 225 of them went to Harper College. Some of them went into academic-oriented subject area, a lot of them went into trades and different things that they've already started in some of our dual-credit scenarios that we offered Barrington High School, where they're getting head starts in different classes, whether it's HVAC, which could be used better tonight here, and it's broke, by the way, the rest of the building's working, this room isn't. And automotive, and landscape architecture, and, I mean, all types of programs we have kids going to. One of the things we've done, a little by little, if our high school principals here would tell you, they, we've had a concentrated effort, and if you see here, we clumped it in as future-ready classrooms or things like that, we've got some ideas and thoughts around really specifying some of our, I would say, tech ed areas, you know, and be able, the ones we currently have, let me give you an example. This summer, we're doing a renovation for our CNA lab, we're actually going to have licensed professionals...
Certified CNAs?
Yeah, certified nursing assistants. We have a lot of kids interested in healthcare. Now, even if, maybe they're going to belong to be doctors, maybe they're going to be CNAs, maybe they're going to be RNs, whatever it is, you know, technicians of some type in the healthcare arena, this class is preparing them. We're renovating the whole space currently this summer inside our building with the help of funds from a variety of sources to do that, because we know it's a very popular program right now for a lot of our kids. We've also, you know, our food service area is very traditional, kind of a classic 1950s kitchen environment, okay? And we know it needs attention. And I, that, I guarantee you, that is, a high school principal would say, "That is going to be part if we were able to do any, you know, classroom renovation." We want to do a food service type, or a, you know, culinary arts experience for kids, because that's reality, to where kids would choose to go down that path and we'd start them out in those. Those are just some examples, but we have partnerships for opportunities for kids, you know, and they get credit at college level as well as Barrington High School at the same time. Junior and senior year usually is when they get into those specialized areas.
And we talked, we'd love to have like a big automotive tech facility, using space for it. But we do, but we do have a reciprocal agreement with 211 and 214.
Our kids go to, yeah, 211 High School right now.
And like for the registered nurse class, do you guys go to ask the hospital for funding to help with that?
We have a partnership with Good Shepherd, and they're the ones helping us get this all set up, absolutely. And with Harper College.
Good Shepherd, and the foundation, and Harper, it's been a great...
Yes. Excited about that. That's something new. We have a lot of kids that really are interested. And again, it's a range of kids. It's really, it's a lot of kids with different interests in healthcare. You know, you get a, they get a basic experience as a junior or senior in high school, so that's a part of all this, and something we're really looking to expand on.
It's also a good example of, we're not just going to wait, right? Where, when we can do something, we are going to do it, right? So that's happening this summer.
But we got other ideas that would like to be included in this.
Right. Great question, thank you.
It's expensive.
Hi, Dr. Harris, and I have this son at Grove, and I'm just on our daily, I'm actually very pleasantly surprised how much you guys were able to include, even if we went to the 200 mark, I think it's great. I had two questions, though. In the 80 column, if we know that there's certain safety and security upgrades that we need to do, are those things that we can start tackling now with the summer budget?
That is a great question. This summer, we're doing some of it. I'm going to let Paul.
I have it in. I just hate to wait for a referendum to pass to start tackling those. And along with saving, I see kindergarten in the red column. With you listing the classrooms there, does that also mean that every child would go to full day, it would just be included as part of the education, or would it still remain as a reference?
Two very good questions. I'm going to let Paul.
I'll start with the question that flew out my brain.
So it was the safety and security that we're doing this summer with the doors.
Thank you. Okay, so every summer, we budget to spend about $2.5 million on what we call summer projects. And so it's a lot of things that you don't see, roofs, parking lots, things like that. Well, we are spending $500,000 of that this year on recane locks for every classroom in the district for safety, so the teachers can be able to lock appropriately should they need to. That came in, that's a lot more than we thought we were going to have to spend to do it. So that's an example of one of those things that we thought was going to be less, and we could phase that in over the one building or another, but we didn't think that was the right thing to do. We felt we needed to do it all at once. And there are a lot of other things that have already been done in the buildings. This is, that we just felt that doing those doors was important. So this would be like the next layer of that. And, you know, if something happens and the community tells us, you know, "We don't want this," you know, we would have to try to chip away at this, because when you only have $2.5 million, $3 million a summer, it doesn't go very far when you look at the things on this list. And that's been our challenge with summer projects, you know? And then about kindergarten, so, do you mind if I just...
Go ahead.
Okay. We have not had a, we have not determined that it would be free of charge. Right now, we, I think we're just worried about the space. So that would be another conversation that I'm going to talk about.
And if we had, and look, if we had the space and the enrollment was at an appropriate time, then we can have that conversation. Hard to even have a conversation to be able to ensure full-day kindergarten as a core when you know you're not, you're not sure you got the space. This would at least enable us to have that conversation.
And some of us that were around when space was a lot tighter than it is now, were really anxious about saying, "Yes, we'll do this," and we had caveats on hand about, "Only as long as we have space." But it's a lot harder to say, "Nope, we're going to stop" than it is, than it is to, do you know what I mean? And so now, I mean, basically, I think this is asking the community, is this, is this enough value to the community to continue this program? If it is, we're going to need to get some space, because it's starting, starting quickly to encroach on other spaces within the building. We really haven't had classrooms in some cases.
All right, okay. We're going, we're going to do our exercise in a little bit. So, but I, I'm happy to take maybe about two or three more questions. Ryan, the back.
Hi, Richard Harrison, I'm a teacher at Grove. We just noticed that the four additional classrooms are in the red, and we were just curious to see what are some of the... curious to see what are some of the planning of action if we don't get that amount? I know we have the mobiles for next year, but just moving forward, what would be the plan of action if we weren't able to get that amount secured?
It, it's hard to predict what a future board would do, right? But if, if for, as part of this process, there wasn't a clear line to, you know, four additional classrooms at Grove, and we wanted to eliminate the mobiles, you're, you're looking at shifting kids, right? Whether that's relocating kindergarten kids or just making a permanent readjustment in our enrollment boundaries, right? But what we didn't want to do was start moving kids around, right, in either kindergarten or enrollment boundaries while we were having this conversation, and then if you have to do it, like you have to do it again, it doesn't make sense, right? So that would be the plan. Yes?
So I have a few more questions, in case I can't just say. Down the lines of that question, actually, I had it up here, that you've got parking, you mentioned safety. Curious, what was the driver on the safety, is there actually did incidents, or it's just that we're trying to avoid something happening? And why would we prioritize parking over classrooms for kids? Because we're trying to not really have a lot of parking in school. We've talked about this in previous years, at little meetings, we were yelling at you guys about parking. So I understand that you try to put that on as a priority, when it comes to that versus, say, four classrooms per school? It seems like you're kind of sort of taking it with the-
I would, I would say, for me, you know, because we each have a little vote on this. For me, when I went to these schools and heard from the people who attend those schools, these were really high, high priorities for those people attending those schools. I, not knowing if it's possible still, if you, so you're asking, why do we prioritize that over the classrooms?
Yeah, because I mean, parking is temporary for people to get their kids there, come back, or for some events that's happening, it's for actual jobs. Classes are every day.
So I would say-
That's a bigger effect on the kids than it is maybe on the parents?
For example, at-
To kind of deal with parking.
For example, at Grove, there's, there's not enough parking here for the staff to all park on the site. They park in the streets, unlike some of our other elementary schools. And some of our elementary schools, you know, countryside, if there's an event, there's no street to park on, because you can't park on like the road. Well, but, okay, Grove doesn't have that luxury, you know, so, you know.
I mean, I know I'm a little exposed to schools, but it just kind of-
Do you want to add anything?
I was just saying, that's a, that's a great comment for your-
Good, exactly. That's the kind of thing that if you wanted to put that up there, put it up, and that's why we're here tonight. But the hard thing, Ken, is to say, you're right, we haven't had any accidents, right? But, but it doesn't mean we're not really concerned about it. We've tried to do stuff with IDOT, you know, you've got, you've got roads with cars just flying by with buses and parents, right? And the classrooms at Grove, for instance, we can, we can solve that issue with a policy choice. It's not a nice one, by redistricting, right? But these are the things we're struggling with. So obviously, we'd like to do it all. I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, David Holtermann, I've got a student at the high school at Bennett Station. I have two questions that are unrelated, and the first was regarding some of the items in the green column for the high school related to PE. And I'm just, I think the state law and the state requirements regarding PE have changed. And there's, and I also know a lot of students get waivers, and so I'm wondering how, how these proposals kind of fit in with the future of PE.
Great question.
What it looks like. I know my son is doing a blended PE right now, so it's a different utilization of resources. My second question is, so that the numbers, these numbers are midpoints, and I'm wondering kind of how, how wide the range is.
Plus or minus 5%.
Okay, that's great.
Was that, was that your second question?
No, it was my second.
Oh, the second was easier.
Yeah, sorry, I just looked at it.
The, the first one, you're, you're right, right? The, the laws around PE are changing. Matter of fact, at our board meeting tomorrow night, we're looking to support policy change to support that, right? So for those that don't know, the, the, the state has kind of eased off of its requirement that schools have daily PE, right? And they've also given us some additional flexibility to offer PE waivers to, to kids in middle school and high school. So we're, we're looking at those policies today. How that would impact this is a great question, and I think we'll have to, as we start digging down, right, as this is a part of what we're starting to dig down into this, a lot of the space was intended as kind of general purposes besides PE and other things. So that's a great question, we have to explore.
You want to add anything?
Yeah, I can comment on that. A lot of what goes on, let's just take the high, because this is a high school issue here, and if any of our PE teachers are here, though, I don't think AMR, you can tune this. What goes on today in physical education classes is much different than I experienced as a kid and probably most everybody in this room. Lifetime fitness is a big part of it. And right now, our facilities limit what we can do in those spaces. And for instance, the high school level, we'd like, want to do a lot more lifetime fitness. And that's why you'll see if in some of the sketches, if you look on the website, we've got large, dedicated fitness areas where we would do almost like a training-type scenario you would see at different, you know, where we use heart rate monitors, do all types of, you know, orientation for kids in those. And right now, we're limited. We can't do much of that. In fact, our fitness room at the high school is an old storage closet, that's what it is. And we, we use it, it's not, doesn't even come close to meeting what we'd like to do in that area for wellness. So that's an example, and if the PE teachers are here, they could explain it better, but it's so different, and really at every level. You'll see that at the middle school level, and you'll also see it even at the elementary level, in some cases, in certain buildings.
We actually talked about that blended PE class and needing more of those spaces like that are shown here in order to have more kids participate in that blended PE.
So it is holding us back. We'd like to do some different stuff, we just can't do it right now because of our space limitations.
The other thing is, our PE classes are the largest class in our entire district. It's not, I think it's 50 in class, you-
Yeah.
Huge.
Other questions as we run it down here. Deb.
You know, a quick comment. I think it was absolutely brilliant, whoever was involved in buying the Quaker Oaks building.
Yeah. Thank you.
Perfect facility, a perfect location, and really cheap, and whoever was involved, great job on that. I love it.
It took us a while to get that one done. So thank you for saying so.
Yeah.
A much-needed facility.
We really appreciate that.
Way in the back, if you-
Hi, I'm Molly Mitchell, and I have three children, and next year I have to have one at each level. So a couple of things-
Congratulations, by the way. You'll get your Merica at Kennedy.
So what hap, a couple more questions. What happens after your last meeting, which is Thursday morning at Bennett Station? Are you guys going to come back again to us, maybe with, even after all our feedback and our posted notes and all that, with different numbers? For me, with someone who is going to have three different levels, I'm looking at this, and I love it all, but if I'm looking at just the green, it's, it's high school focused. I mean, that's what it is. Which, for me, with my third grader, who's only going to be in grade next year, you know, I would love to see some of the middle school stuff shipped over to the green area. I'd rather that number be 175 and, and go off those numbers. Because I, I think my fear is, trying to get this past, people with young children are going to look at this and go, why am I going to vote for this for, you know, my kids aren't going to be in high school for years? Whereas I'd rather see more of an impact at each level. If that means increasing the number to 175, to me, that would be like, oh, okay, this would affect all three of my kids. Brilliant.
Write that on your notes, yeah? Put that down.
That's exactly the kind of feedback we want to have tonight.
So what, so, so back to my first question though, what is the next step after your last meeting at Bennett Station?
You know, it'll be, the, the quick answer is more, more deliberation, but I think it's probably, and it helped me remember, right, but it's probably a more appropriate conversation after our last exercise. And then we'll, we'll talk about that later. Yep?
Just a clarification, when you have, under the site work, site facilities are reflected on the balance?
Yes.
Is there a little bit more definition on what that is?
No. Lance, you want to add, you want to add to that?
Stormwater management.
Yeah, it's just all the site. Do you want to add anything to that about the importance of just making a lot of-
High school, 3.3.
Oh, yeah, so there's definitely the infrastructure associated with, you know, all your sites are used, gas, water, storm, sanitary, or any, either underground or low-grade intention to support all the new and permanent space that we've had there. So it's the infrastructure, it's the stuff you don't see.
Does that answer your question?
And remember, that's-
All that stuff you can't see.
Right, and that's a lot of stuff, right? Because there's a lot of stuff going into high school from the new plan. Now, to, to the point, if we decide, for instance, let's say we decide we're going to take a lot of this high school stuff and not do it, right? We would go back to Lance, and we'd kind of fine-tune that number for the scope of what we are doing, and try to get a better number to support what we are going to do at the high school, right? So there's, there's still a little bit of calibration in numbers based on how we start to focus this. Oh, there, sorry.
I'm Chris Bradley, I have an elementary school and a middle school students. Early discussions I saw, can we be school for a few more years?
Yes.
And I've heard in the past about the difficulty managing those programs as they rotate for the different schools. Can you talk a little bit about the discussion around that and how it's all out?
It was really one at cost, right? I mean, I think, look, I, I would say there were probably three elementary building issues that had a lot of interest on the board, right? I think the, an extra community school that could free up space at all of our elementaries was very attractive. I think we've got two buildings that, you know, you could, you could make a really strong argument that Sunny Hill should be replaced with a new building, and, and I think even Huff, right? Because it's kind of landlocked and, but, you know, the, the new community building, I think that the cost was like $35 million, right? And it just became a priority challenge to say that that was a priority over this stuff, right? So the, the challenge that we would always ask ourselves at the board table is, if I'm going to put that on this sheet, what $35 million are you going to displace it with? And can you justify it?
The other thing is, when we did the math, you know, if you remember Brian's comments about the middle, the third middle school, how there would be some things that wouldn't need to be done? When you looked at the things that wouldn't need to be done, perhaps the additional kindergarten classrooms, the additional classrooms here, maybe the sensory, sensory, you weren't, you weren't getting close enough to the price of the third, or the, the elementary school for some. Now, if what we've been told over and over though by our architect is, knowing that we have land to do that, if we were to see it, a growth of enrollment at the elementary level, that would be the way of managing that enrollment.
And I would say, I would encourage all of us as a community, if we get to a point, if we're starting adding, if we get to a point where we're really adding a lot of space in elementary, to do a deeper dive in some of those spots and see if we can't get that gap a little smaller, because I still think it would probably, for many of us, I think we think that an extra elementary school would be better than adding on space to our existing schools, right? If we can make that cost neutral, cost effective, I, I think that's a better community choice, in my opinion, right? That's probably another conversation.
That was my biggest heartbreak too, was taking that, that one falling off, that I wanted to maybe see even a K through 8 experience in that community school, to try to get space for all levels. But we did look at that math a little bit, and again, it, it's just difficult. And then you get into the equity with the other middle schools too, so.
Okay, so now it's time, I'm sorry, so now it's time, you guys can stretch your legs, right? So we're going to, I'm going to set my, my phone for five minutes, right? Hope you've been taking some notes, but I want you to take a lot of your thoughts, right? And there's spots, you know, at the bottom of all these charts, right? Each chart represents one of the levels, right? So if you, if you want to say, hey, I love this the way it is, that's fine. If you want to say, you know, boy, in this level, I'd really like to see more elementary, or I'd like to see this, I'd like to see that, or I don't like this, this is the time we want to try to capture all those comments, right? So if you can write them on your sticky, you get to stretch your legs, you guys can converse a little bit. If your blood sugar needs a boost, there's a whole bunch of treats in the back, grab those, and then we're going to come back in five minutes, we'll summarize those comments, and then the last exercise is kind of financial value. Go. Five minutes begins now.
[inaudible]
Is there ever a type of discussion about, uh, since they've been grown, school, that's been a topic in the past?
Yeah, it's kind of like lunch, right? There's both old schools, but they, they're in a community, and they're not fully living, right? So like, huh, it's partially living, but the community in New Haven is a gym story school, you have to start to... Sunny Hill is not immune of good shit. And it's an over looking industry, right? And that's why I say, but you know, Sunny Hill, I might say, it's not bad, it's good, it would be based on age, and... Grove is, I mean, you would say Grove and Lime should be choice, but that's the one which...
And they are like, has the advantage that they don't have to be repressed, but they have...
Unless she's kind of continuing to maintain that, right?
Yeah.
Right? I mean, they're not gonna be quite, Cassius, it makes it central, I agree.
Gotcha.
But this is the hard, see, this is the hard part in the community discussion, because these are good children, right? They're in, 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 in one area. I mean, look, we have the greatest candidate in the world, people's power, right? But at some point, I gotta say, there's more than we've got to invest in. Like, now it's kind of, race can be so high, because still, still people are competitive, right? But that's one of the things that's on that exercise, that we're trying to get a sense from people where that value proposition is, right? Because, because there's a board, I don't know if it's closer to the 80 or closer to the 30, we're gonna try to find out to get a conversation and get some... But yeah, these things, I mean, look...
I know, they've lost a lot of money, so they're down to play the school.
It's a great idea, but...
Thirty-five hundred dollars, right? Money fuck.
And we also get, we also get, right, we gotta remember, the majority of our community is not having kids in the school. You know, fifteen percent, no kids in the school, right? And they're gonna say, what are you considering now? You gotta top it in schools, if you're finding a way to...
Not understand, but they are actually crazy.
Okay, are we ready? Yes. Could be next fall, could be next year. I don't know. And these are, this is why we're having the conversation.
Okay, are we ready? So everybody got their stickies up? I gotta give you guys kudos. These, you guys asked very good questions, and just based on the volume of sticky notes, we're gonna have some really good feedback.
Wow.
Now, what we're gonna do here, just to quickly summarize this, and we're still on track to try to get you guys out of here, I think by nine. We have some of our talented administrative staff manning each board, and they have been given the task to try to summarize for you guys the, kind of, some of the, some of the sticky notes into kind of some of the themes that have emerged. So with that, who's starting out? Introduce yourself.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm John Rees, Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and I have three. Don't do too many referendum items, allow us to provide feedback online, and... All of the, it looks like all of the, balance the priorities, that's it.
Okay, okay. You, I think, win the award for the most stickies.
I think I do. So I'm Crimeo Klavan, Assistant Superintendent for Operations in K-12 Schools, and I have more than three, so I'm gonna just kind of talk about themes that emerge. So a lot of notes that I kind of clucked together of looking for equity between elementary, middle school, and high school. Come up with a proposal that will include representation of all three levels was kind of a theme. The second column that kind of emerged was placing middle school as a priority over some of the high school athletics and parking and so forth, but moving middle school over and making that more of a priority. And then a general theme of classrooms future ready over some of the facility related items like parking and athletics. So just a general theme of looking for additional classrooms to be in the proposal. Those are the three things that emerged on this board.
Excellent.
Hi, I'm Micah Corb, I'm the Principal of Countryside Elementary School, and some of the themes that Dr. Winkelman stated are a plenty, led over here. So I separated into four. The first ones were positive, they really liked this level, they were excited about this. The middle column, which is the largest column, talks about, meaning the suggestions were all around regarding putting more money into classrooms and less into the area of parking, and also kind of we're talking about leveling out some of the distribution of funding on the three different levels. And then here, you know, this was some positive things regarding wanting the parking to be changed, and then at the end, there was some comments regarding, you know, we probably could use a little bit less of some of the high school facilities additions that we'll put on there. So those are the themes of, online.
Hi, Katie Matthews, I'm Katie Matthews, I'm the Principal here at Grove. And actually, there were very similar themes that emerged on this board as well, specifically classrooms and sensory and therapy offices don't come in until this level, and so there was a lot of feedback about items at the elementary level should appear sooner at one of the earlier levels. And also, the prioritization of parking lots versus classrooms, and that many of the posts that said that, the classroom space and things that affect instruction or where students are going to be, should be prioritized over some of the other facilities on there. Also, there were multiple comments that while all students attend DHS, that the students are, spend more time at the elementary level than they do at the high school level, so moving some of the items from the elementary to an earlier level would be a priority. There was one comment that discussed having equitable space in each of the buildings for specialized programs, and one comment that thought that this was maybe a budget that was too big.
Hello, I'm Cynthia Amadara, I'm actually the Principal of Sunny Hill Elementary School. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. On this board, we have one comment of Harvard High School, from that level, from the middle school level, way too much, but please don't rip the third middle school Band-Aid off. And from the elementary level, please move dual language and Chinese immersion to a new elementary and out of existing. So one comment for each level.
Well, thank, and thank you guys, that's great feedback. Okay, our last exercise, the dots, right? So there is a two dimensional problem, right? We are trying to all have this conversation about, right? And that is priorities of projects in the buildings along with a reasonable budget, right? That, that we as taxpayers could see a value, right? Now, you have a sense here for the kind of values that you're getting at each level, right? So this exercise is intended to try to get a sense of your comfort level, right? Where you see value, right? So if you, if there is a level up here where you say, you know what, I see the value in that, I see, you know, I see what the budget is, I see what I'm getting for it, it's a value that I could support, we're gonna ask you to put a green dot on. The flip side, right? If you, if you look at one of these levels and you just say, that's a bridge too far, right? Given the budget, given the impact, given what I get for it, there's no way I could support kind of that level, right? That would be a red dot, right? And then if you have space between your dots, and there's a level that you say, you know, I think I can get to some of this stuff, right? But I'm not absolutely sure, I'd have to kind of think about it a little bit more, right? That could be the yellow dot, right? Now, so if, for instance, you are one of our many friends and neighbors who believe that we ought to just save, take the tax savings and not invest anything more in schools, right? Then you would take your red dot and put it on the 80 million, right? Because that 80 million's too far for you to go, right? If you are one of our friends and neighbors, and there's some of these too, right, who say, I'll spend anything for this schools, right? Then you would put a green dot on the very last, right? And you're not gonna use me. Now, if you have, if you put your green and red dots right next to each other, you don't need the yellow dot, right? Now, a lot of you would like to see at some of these valuations, like to see some shuffling of the priorities, right? Based on the comments that we heard, right? So, and we had this, this was the same kind of dynamic Saturday morning when we did it. So what I'd ask you to do, is if there's a level that you're putting your, your green or yellow dot on, but it's predicated on reshuffling the priorities a little bit, right? Just put a little asterisk, right, in that dot, right? See, I could get here, basically I'm okay here, but I really support kind of the reshuffling based on some of the comments that we just heard. And then if you look at the bottom of each chart, right? What was, could, it'll help all of us to get a visual at the end here, you'll see there are three columns, right, at the end of each dot. So if you're gonna put a green dot on a board, put it in that far left column, if you're gonna put a red dot, use the far right column, and if you're gonna put a yellow dot, put it in the middle. And then we'll all have a nice visual on where we ended up. Does that make sense? Questions before we...
Oh, yes, Chris?
Yes.
So if you have, so for instance, let's say, and I'm making this up, right? So let's say you can support the green, right? The 150, but in your mind, I can only do it if there's more middle school in that level, right? Then just put a little asterisk there, right? Because that tells us you can support that level and roughly that value, but you'd like to see us shuffle it around a little bit. Right? Because we don't have the ability to shuffle it tonight, right? But we're just trying to get a sense of the kind of value that you think you're gonna get in these buildings with what the budget is. What?
I can't wait.
Other questions before... You guys all ready? Oh, we got questions.
Is it possible, if it's a good idea, or it's better for you guys, to be more specific, and supposed to put an asterisk, even if it's like an E for elementary?
If you want, if that, yeah, if you wanna say, sure, sure. If you want, if your asterisk says, if you put it on, if you put a green one on there and you wanna say, you want to put an E, an M, or an H, you know, for elementary, middle, and high school saying, I want more of this in that one, that's fine, I'm gonna, that's a good, it's a good ad, I like it. Any others? Okay, let's go do the dots, see where it goes.
Right, right. That's what I'm thinking.
You guys, one, one again. The guy, the group on Saturday was not nearly as neat in their road with the dots as you guys. This is really impressive. So look, if I, if I look at this, there's a lot of concern about the value at that 330 level, right? And I, and I, and the board was concerned about that. There seems to be kind of, you know, there's not a lot of yellow or red at the 150, at the 150 mark, right? But then we start getting, as we start getting to the 2 and 250 mark, it starts getting a little bit more mixed, right? There's a lot of support and there's a lot of, hey, I need to see a little bit more detail. Does that surprise you guys, that it came out this way? Now, you guys are a self-selecting group, now go ahead.
I guess the comment I would say too is like, when you look at that far one, it's $140 on a tax, and it's not just us that would pay for it, but it'd be people that don't have kids in school.
Yeah, right.
So I think it'd be a hard thing to get past.
Yeah.
So it's kind of like, it's also, when I look at it, I look at what's realistic can we get, so we're not trying to go for something that then gets turned down, and then we waste the time and everything else. It's like, what's realistic can we get through?
So along those lines, and by the way, I would say, your assessment with some of the sticky notes and this exercise, very similar to the group on Saturday, right? Similar feedback, similar kind of dynamics on comfort level. Do you think, think in your neighborhood, right, about people in your neighborhood that don't have kids in the school anymore, which is a majority of our community, right? Majority of our community does not have kids in the school. Do you think they'd have the same view of things? Do you think they'd be flexible? It's a hard question, right?
From my experience, a lot of families stay in their group, while you may not have households or rooms that have children in school, you have families who have grandchildren or sisters and nephews, and I do think parents have a very strong civic spirit as well. So I think, I think a lot of schools are schools and are proud of the schools, so even if they may not have a child in school, I think there is an incentive to fund the education.
Good to hear.
I feel like some, I think, our neighbors who might not have children in the school district, they'd probably be somewhere between, I don't mind paying $300 more a year for our schools. For sure not $100, maybe 400, but I think they'd be willing to pay more than $192.
That is completely right, I think you're right. Now, the question was asked about what next, right? So we got one more of these Thursday morning. I think then the board, we wanted to make sure we got in these sessions before the summer break, right? Because we all kind of shut down for the summer, right? But the board and administration's gonna try to process this and figure out how to come back in the fall, right? And engage the community, I think, in further dialogue. Now, there is, I mean, look, there's an outside chance, I, you know, if we were to go to referenda for the fall election, you know, November election in the fall, for us to do that, we would, the board would have to officially take action to put that question on the ballot by August 20th, right? on the ballot by August 20th, right? That seems like we're gonna shortchange, that would shortchange the community engagement piece, right? And we're doing it over the summer, and we're trying to be very transparent. So I think that that would be a real long shot, to be honest with you. But I, I, you know, we gotta have that conversation, right? After this conversation. But, if we were to go in the spring, right? In the spring election, that means, you know, we would use the fall to kind of fine-tune this engagement, try to really see kind of where it is. And I think that, you know, one of the things we're trying to figure out is, where, where along this value line do we draw the line? And then, and then how, how do we adjust the priorities in terms of what's on one side of the line versus the other? That may be the next kind of community dialogue we would have in the fall. And we'll try to work through some of that stuff over the summer. Other questions?
I just have a clarification. So, right now, 741 dollars of taxes for a $500,000 house is what we're paying for. So, to, at the referendum, it would basically say, your tax wouldn't change, you would still continue to pay the same, or you'd go 740 above that?
Well, no, so, the 150 level, right? Which is roughly break even, it's minus 19, right? That would essentially mean your, your tax bill is gonna stay pretty much unchanged, right? Nothing happens. It's like re-upping the mortgage kind of thing, you just, you know? But, but, instead of paying the house off and no longer having the mortgage paid, right? Whereas, if you go anything above that, it's actually gonna be an incremental add on the tax bill, from where we are today. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Can I see another hand?
If you just do it in the spring, let's say, how quickly would we start to see any type of impact from it?
So we can issue the bonds, you know, in the next 30 days, assuming the bond, you know, is a favorable market. But then obviously, I mean, we're gonna look at that guy over there and say, build it, build it quick, right? But what I would say is, if we get to a point where we focus this a little bit, right? There's probably some more planning and deep diving that we do on the areas that we're focusing on, to try to be prepared a little bit more. But realistically, you gotta go through some engineering and design work and things like that, so, it's not good, some of the stuff.
It takes a while.
Yeah. Furniture, fixtures, that's a little easier.
So if you were, let's say you were in April 2019 referendum, you'd probably not go to a perfect place until spring, summer.
Using that first year to do your engineering, for the really big building stuff.
And go to bed, and all that.
Yeah.
Furniture and fixtures, you know, that you would put into the classroom.
There's definitely some little hanging fruit and stuff that you can jump on right away, but anything that's.
Security can be the first thing? Well, it depends what else we're gonna be doing in a particular building. So if there's a building that is gonna have a lot of work, you might wait on that one.
Like the high school, for instance, if we did a lot there, or middle schools, we did a lot there, we'd package it in all at the same time. But if we had isolated scenarios at certain buildings, like the elementary level, for instance, then maybe we could do it right away.
Yeah, most, most of the buildings that aren't having big renovations, right? We know what we're gonna do, do that compartmentalizing, that could go fast.
There's value in having a company do as much work as possible at one time financially, as opposed to come, come to do, come fix this window, this stay here in another room. You understand? Yeah, like your house.
Other questions?
I just want to say thank you, I think you guys did an amazing job, and you've done so much work, and thank you, everybody here is so polite and respectful.
That's right, isn't it? Was this helpful?
Yes, yes, excellent.
Okay. Tell your friends.
Yeah, tell your friends and neighbors.
Tell your friends to go Thursday at Station, right? Thursday morning, 9:30 at Station. We'll do this again.
Thanks for coming out on this, what may have been a really busy night.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. If you have other questions, we'll hang around and ask, answer any other question.